There is no one that we're going to memorialize tonight, so we can commence with that part of the agenda. I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's nobody else with that voice. I'm going to ask the clerk to call the order, please.
Roll call for this evening. Counselor Junta.
Present.
Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor O'Brien.
Here.
Counselor Shan.
Present.
Counselor Tontar is absent. Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Zied.
Present.
Counselor Devlin.
Here.
Counselor Earls.
Present.
Counselor Agaman.
Here.
Counselor Connell.
Present. Are there late filed items?
There are no late filed items, Mr. President.
I would point out to the members that we have a draft of an item that's going to come out of committee tonight that has just recently landed on your desks. The committee will discuss this draft in the context of their discussion during committee reports. And we're going to look at public comment. Jane?
Good evening. Jane Snow, 9 Coffin Street. Happy early Valentine's Day to all of you, and I'm glad it's not Valentine's Day that you're sitting here and not home with your family. First of all, I'd like to speak in support of Counselor Zied's order that would ask for a attorney at the planning board and ZBA meetings. I think that's really important. I've been to a lot of the meetings lately, and whenever it's anything of any substance, the applicant always has an attorney, and they seem to kind of rule the meeting sometimes. So I would like the support given to both the planning board and to the ZBA members of having an attorney present. And I'd go so far, a little bit further than what Counselor Zied asked for, and I think it's almost mandatory that we do have an attorney at each of the meetings all of the time, because the things that are being put in front of these boards is becoming more and more complex. So I would ask you to consider and support that measure from Counselor Zied. And I am opposed to the ordinance 11 that's coming up before the meeting this evening about putting things in front of the other committees before, on the zoning that counselors are to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Lambert.
Good evening. Linda Lambert, 58 Merrimack Street. I ask that the city council support the ordinance to require a city solicitor to be present during appropriate zoning and planning board meetings. As developments move forward, the zoning and planning boards will be faced with complex discussions and situations that will require legal expertise. Developers will have their team of high-priced and highly talented legal counsel at meetings in an effort to maximize their employer's interests, and our city needs to be poised to protect our own interests, and the zoning and planning boards should have their own legal counsel for guidance in those situations. Please support bringing this ordinance to committee so that we are never in a position of having to defer to an applicant's legal team's opinion or interpretation of law whose interest is solely that of their clients and not that of the city of Newburyport. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Nicodick, 93 High Street. President Connell, I'm speaking in favor of the ordinance to amend Chapter 2 regarding the city solicitor. The city council should have a say in who the city solicitor is. And I was shocked, actually, the first time I learned that that is not the case right now. The city solicitor should be present at planning board and ZBA hearings. The proposed thresholds would be too low to help in the kinds of cases I regularly follow for the Newburyport Preservation Trust, but they would be a start and would certainly help in other painful cases I have watched and been concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette Isabella.
Jeanette Isabella, 1 Lime Street. I am also in favor of Counselor Zied's proposal that we have a city counselor. I'm sorry. Well, I'd like to have you there, actually, at the zoning and planning board meetings, because if you were there, you would see that all too often, the applicant's attorney is interpreting law for the, especially zoning board. It's an embarrassment, and it's not right. They aren't equipped to know the law, interpret the law, or do right by we citizens. So I think that the city council also should have a say in who that city solicitor is. All kinds of people come before you because they want to be on one board or commission or another, and you give approval, but you don't have approval for a city solicitor. That doesn't make sense. So you having the ability to approve the city solicitor's appointment and the city solicitor being present at planning and boarding, present at planning and boarding, zoning board meetings, I think it is just more appropriate. The applicants have their attorney. We should have an attorney. All it does is level the playing field. So I ask that you send Ordinance 7 to committee so that it can come back for a full discussion by the city council with members of the public present and be unaware of what's happening. I also ask that you please respect the city council and the citizens of Newburyport and vote against Order 11. I don't even understand where that idea would come from. It doesn't even sound democratic to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Deffley. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly, Jean.
I'm Jean Deffley. I live at 6 Woodman Way. I stand to thank Counselor Zied for his letter to the editor in today's Daily News. He brought to our attention Counselor Vogel's attempt to severely curtail the power of the city council and the residents. Order number 11 would require that nearly all legislation be run through the mayor or her staff before being filed. This is deplorable and smacks of Trump-like maneuvers. Strip the people and their representatives who are trying to serve the people, strip them of their power when they're trying to serve the people. Please vote against Order Number 11. This maneuver smacks of fear by the mayor and Counselor Vogel and those who follow their lead. Thank you.
Laurel Algrove, excuse me.
Laurel Algrove, 22 Beacon Ave. I'm also opposed to Order 11. This is a democracy. I mean, you are the governing body that basically makes the laws and listens to the citizens. If you allow yourself to be neutered, as that's the term that I've heard, then you're also neutering the citizens of this community, and basically, we won't have a voice. And to me, it's a slippery slope. So please, please say no to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Pam Ketchum, 15 Washington Street. I also am standing to urge you to vote no on Order Number 11 for all the reasons mentioned and for everything outlined in Counselor Zied's letter to the editor. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone who signed up has spoken. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, I've taken something out of order here. I think the mayor would like to comment. The mayor's comments, and we have some dignitaries here as well.
Yes, yes. Before I give my update, it is always a pleasure to recognize individuals who work for the city who do extraordinary things. Our last meeting, we were able to recognize three firefighters who delivered a baby, and now tonight, we are recognizing Lieutenant Matt Simons, who actually saved a life. So I'm going to turn this first part over to Marshall Murray, and then there'll be citations presented from myself, Senator Ives, and from Rep. Cal Course. Marshall Murray. Lieutenant, please come forward.
First of all, thank you for letting us recognize Lieutenant. Thank you all. I appreciate that. So a little bit about the story. Lieutenant was traveling with his wife and children, which are sitting right over here on Route 97 in Groveland, and he observes a vehicle coming at him in the other lane, and it's acting kind of, driving kind of funny, and he observes like there's no driver. So the car quickly comes at him and veers off behind him, hit the telephone pole. He quickly turns around, realizes he's got to act, and he approaches the vehicle and observes the victim hunched over in the car, and he's severely injured. At that point, he pulls the person out of the vehicle, performs CPR, and was able to get him back to breathing. So he was out, according to after the fact, but the hospital said that he actually, because of his actions, saved his life. If he wasn't there, he would have died. So I have to commend the lieutenant for that. Our officers do this, you know, on a daily basis. They're going to medical calls and all that, but when you're off duty, going above and beyond, I think it needs to be recognized. So for that, I do want to say, his dedication, his professionalism is a true testament to his character, and he's a true leader, and I appreciate it, and I commend him for that.
Your fellow officers would like to join us up at the microphone. I think that'd make for a better photo op. Come on, gentlemen.
I just want to present this. This is a letter that's going to be apparently in his file along with one of my recognition points, but she probably already has one, but I'm giving her another one. And also a lifesaver award for going above and beyond your duty to Lieutenant Simons, so.
And, City of Newburyport, certification of accommodation is hereby awarded to Lieutenant Matt Simons. On January 27, 2018, Lieutenant Simons, while off duty, was traveling on School Street in Groveland when he observed a vehicle driving slowly over the road's center line. As he passed, the vehicle accelerated, crossed the lane, and struck a telephone pole. Rushing to aid the motorist, Lieutenant Simon removed the unconscious driver from his vehicle and began CPR until first responders arrived. The victim was med flighted to Boston, where he is now recovering. It is my honor, as mayor of the city of Newburyport, to extend to you the city's gratitude and appreciation for your performance in saving the life of a motorist in this life-threatening emergency. The city is privileged to have you as a member of the Newburyport Police Department. Given under my hand and seal this 12th day of February in the year 2018, Donna D. Holiday, Mayor.
And Representative Kel Course and I want to present you with official citations. Mine reads as follows. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Lieutenant Matthew Simons in recognition of your extraordinary commitment to public safety and for going above and beyond the call of duty to assist a fellow citizen in their time of need. And be it further known that the Senate extends its best wishes for continued success. It's signed by the Senate President, the Clerk of the Senate, myself, and it's my honor to present it to you.
Matt, I know you as a father and a husband because our kids go to school together, so it gives me great honor and privilege to first give from the governor's office to you a citation from Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito in recognition, on behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The governor is pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation and recognition of your courageous act in saving the life of a civilian in Groveland, Massachusetts. You are a prime example of what it means to protect and serve this 12th day of February in the year 2018, signed by Governor Charlie Baker and Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I also, and from the House of Representatives, in recognition of your courageous efforts to protect and save the life of a civilian, your bravery is a true act of heroism, and is to be commended. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given this 12th day of February 2018 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, signed by Speaker Robert A. DeLeo and myself, James Cal Course, state rep for the 1st Essex District. Thank you for everything that you've done for saving Matt's life.
Thank you, guys, very much. You know, it's not something that you do and act like that and expect recognition. You know, I only hope that if myself or one of my loved ones was in a similar situation and there was someone that had training passing by, that, you know, they would act in the same way. And, you know, I think it's just a humane thing to do. It's not something that you think about, especially when you're trained to do it. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you.
Okay, a couple of updates. This was a little late off the press, so I apologize for any typos or whatever, so we'll get that cleaned up before it gets posted, but wanted to be sure to get you at least a semblance of an update for this meeting. Housing Choice Initiative, this is an important initiative that has been filed, a bill by House Bill 4075, an act to promote housing choices, was filed by the governor, and this was part of the 20-year zoning bill that they were trying to revise. And I was really pleased to see, it was a very, very complicated bill, that they pulled the housing piece out of it and filed this bill. On February 2, I joined some of the members of the Mass MMA to testify before the joint legislative body to, in support of this bill. It's very exciting in that it should work similar to the green communities where you, if you are a community that has produced 5% increase in housing over the last five years, if you have a no more terrorism on housings, if you have a community compact for best practices, which we do, if you have a housing production plan, and there's, and if you, also if you've met your 10% requirement. You don't have to have all of those, but those are some of the components that would lead you to become a certified housing choice initiative. There are Chris Clutchman, who has, was the planner in Westford, has now been hired to oversee this program in the state, and working collaboratively with Mass Housing Partnerships. We're trying to get a meeting with them. We're hoping that they might be able to give us some direction and support on the adaptive reuse of the Brown School. And was able to talk to some of those players last week at an MMA policy meeting. I'm also very happy to report that Seth Moulton, our congressman, has put us in touch with the Kennedy School of Government, and on February 2, a team of 40 graduate students came to Newburyport to evaluate our community, to see if they would be willing to accept us into this project, where they work with us on a gap analysis to identify what we're working on to address flooding issues, resiliency, those kinds of things, and that by working with this group, we could potentially qualify for FEMA's community rating system, which would be a tremendous benefit to residents in the city because that has the opportunity to decrease flood insurance by 20 to 40%, which, as you know, those of you who have been working with people who live in flood zones, the FEMA mats having been revised has caused a tremendous increase in flood insurance. So we're very excited to be part of this project, and we begin our work with them on Friday. There's a little more detail in my update. Central Waterfront, I mentioned to you that we had a meeting with the Waterfront Trust, the NRA, and the settlers on January 22 to review where we were on the memorandum of agreement, land dispositions, and outstanding issues. This was followed up by a meeting with the chair of the NRA and Waterfront Trust. We are working on scheduling a joint public meeting with the Waterfront Trust, NRA, and the city, and I will get that date to you as soon as possible. Budget and capital plan, budget meetings with department heads are underway. I have requested from department heads that they present to me their highest of priorities for capital items, because we want to devote much more funding to roads and sidewalks this year. I think everyone's aware that this winter, between the change in temperatures and some of the patchwork we've done before, is not holding up, and we really need to do more work on our roads and sidewalks. So we are potentially looking at a $1.6 million allocation this year between our Chapter 90 funds, what we're able to, what we've already allocated, the, thank you, counselors for the $300,000 that you allocated, and in addition to some additional funding that we're looking at to be able to allocate this towards more roads and sidewalks. Met with DPS today. They've put together a five-year plan, which I think is the way that we've been wanting to go for a long time, so residents can look up, see where their road is on the list, subject to change, of course, based on winter conditions. Most of the counselors have had an opportunity to meet with DPS regarding, once we did the beta engineering study of sidewalks, and so the two new counselors are going to be, they're going to be reaching out to you to come in and look at that, look at the roads that have been prioritized, and before it's finalized, obviously, we want all of the counselors' input. We received the draft from John Burke on the parking study. We're in the process of completing an internal review, and as soon as that is done, and we are trying to schedule a conference call with Mr. Burke, we will release the plan to the city counselors for your next meeting, if not sooner, and we'll be scheduling a public meeting after that with Mr. Burke to discuss his findings to the public. Intermodal Facility Garage, I'm pleased to report that the word from the Attorney General's Office came through that the bid protest was denied on the garage. So the next IAG meeting is, oh, see, it says school, it should be scheduled for February 22 at 6:30 in the mayor's conference room. Waterfront West, we are still awaiting a date for the meeting with Doing Development in Boston to work on design. That was originally scheduled back in November, but we did receive news last week that Scott Kelly, who has been one of NED's key staff that we've been working with for years and years and years, is leaving the company and will be moving to another state. So we're anxious to see who is going to be replacing his position at NED. In terms of schools, Andrew Wolf of Salem has accepted the position for the new high school principal. We're very excited about his coming to Newburyport. And the school committee has received two finalists for the superintendent's position based on the people who did yeoman's work in the superintendent's search committee. Tomorrow, they are scheduled to be here for the day with different, obviously going in different directions, with a signed school committee member to tour our school district. The resumes are attached for you to take a look at them. And then, an open meeting tomorrow night at school committee meeting at 6 o'clock at the media center at the high school, we will begin interviews. These are the preliminary interviews with the two finalists, and from there, there will be community and school meetings, forums that will be scheduled, as well as visits to their school districts or other places they have consulted to, and that will be followed by final interviews with the school committee. All of these will be conducted in public. Public hearing on the school district budget for FY '19 is scheduled for Tuesday, February 27, at 6:30 at the Senior Community Center, and would encourage all of you to be there. Merrimack River, Lowell Sewer Department organized a meeting of other DPS staff to discuss the status of combined sewer and stormwater or CSO activations due to recent concerns about pollutants in the river. They have a follow-up meeting scheduled. We are also working on scheduling a meeting with the Merrimack River Watershed, who also has extensive data and research on pollutants entering the Merrimack River. So we're continuing to organize as communities along the river to address some of these issues. The Hale Street Ad-Hoc Committee unfortunately had to be canceled due to weather, and I will confirm with you by the end of this week a new date for that meeting. I'm happy to report that Representative Cal Course's office has filed the Home Rule petition for Chapter 41(c) and 1/2, HD 4591, an act authorizing the city of Newburyport to hold a special election for the purpose of accepting the terms of Clause 41(c) and 1/2 of Section 5, Chapter 59 of the Mass General Laws. And you have the number there, so you can track that, and I will keep you updated as I get more information. As I have mentioned to you of past updates, we are working on renegotiating our trash hauling contract, and we're quite surprised when the bids came in at a 36% increase. We have been meeting directly with Mello, who is our existing hauler, and have been able to get this down to about 18%, still too high, so we're continuing to work on trying to get that decreased. We also, last week, received our health insurance increase of 6.5%, which is not a good number, but we'll continue to try and work with the PAC around trying to reduce that. We also had a consultant, NFP, work with us to send out an RFP, and we have solicited some responses to that, but I understand those bids are even higher. So we will be meeting with the PAC group on Thursday, February 15, to take a look at those bids. The Merrimack River Beach Alliance permitting is moving forward on the dredge of the Biscuit River with state funding, and we are awaiting word from the Army Corps of Engineer, which of the 10 or 11 dredging projects are before them, will be accepted and funded. Again, this would be nearshore sand placement to Plum Island and Salisbury due to the incompatibility of the sand, and we are hoping to work with Charos on a smaller dredge that they will be doing sometime in late March, I understand, and we're hoping to work with the Conservation Commission and DPS to get that sand on reservation terrace. And additionally, we're working with the state to establish a trust fund with a small increase in parking fees to the north lot on Plum Island as a way of establishing this trust fund so that we may be able to do some more work in having a beach nourishment fund. A couple of other special events that occurred. We had a ribbon cutting on February 1 for the expanded site of the Riverwalk Brew. There next to March Ritchie woodworking on Parker Street. And last night, I had the privilege of presenting Eagle Scouts with accommodations for their projects. Four out of the five Eagle Scouts were there, really nice community projects that they presented. And finally, on February 21, at 6:00 p.m., if you haven't been to this event, it's wonderful. Youth Services does the asset awards.
Counselor Zied.
Just two questions on the trash hauling. Thank you for the update on that. One is, when you say potential decreases, are, do you, has made any changes to the pickup schedule, or is that what's being discussed?
Not necessarily to the pickup schedule, but we've been very lenient in our honoring the contract. Any complex over seven units is supposed to have their own trash hauling. We've been flexible. We've been picking up at restaurants downtown where we really shouldn't be doing that. Restaurants should have their own haulers. So things like that could help us decrease the costs, so we're looking at all, in every one of these factors that is in the contract to find ways to decrease it further.
Residents should expect the every other for recycling.
Oh, yes, yes.
That's generally the case.
Yes, and I mean, if recycling problems weren't what they were, because I know there's a real interest on the part of residents to have recycling every week, but there's nowhere to send the recycling at this point. So there's no point in collecting it every week. It's just sitting in trailers. So until we can resolve that, I think all of you received an update from me from DEP. I sent you out an email of what they had addressed in terms of some of the things that they're aware of with the Chinese sword and all these challenges that are impacting haulers in terms of recycling.
My other question on that is, does an 18% increase change any math on the compost program? Because I remember that last year, it didn't, it wasn't enough, unfortunately, financially, but this doesn't.
No, because we're all paying for that now.
Okay.
Let's say a dollar a week, a dollar and change a week if you want to be picked up for compost, so that's being paid by the resident to do that. I mean, there's all kinds of different things that we're looking at in terms of this, and I'll certainly keep you updated and get your input before we finalize that particular contract.
Thank you.
Okay. And can I just say one other thing about this rule that people have talked about? I think that, you know, the only request that I made when the council was looking at their rules was that if there was an order or an ordinance that was coming into the council packet, would it be possible to be sure that the department or my office was aware, aware of it? Because oftentimes, it impacts operations. aware, aware of it? Because oftentimes, it impacts operations, which is the purview of the executive branch, and it also can impact finances, which is the purview of the executive branch. That's all I was asking. This is way over the top in terms of comments here. Thank you.
Further questions?
Now we know the source.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Which consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for the council retreat on January 24th and the last meeting January 29th. There are three transfers, all to go to budget and finance. First transfer number two is NotSureTech 9,000 transferring to elections, 5K legal ads, 1,000, and ordinance recertification, 3,000. Transfer number three, gas, 50,000 to DPS Highway Fuel Oil, same amount. Transfer number four, NotSureTech, 6.5,000 to High School Addition feasibility, same amount. Again, those three going to budget and finance. Next communication is to be received and filed is communication number 13, FY18 mid-year report summary and supplemental information. There are two appointments. First appointment number, appointment number six, Keith Hogan, 3 Bartlett Drive to the Trust Fund Committee, excuse me, 31, 2021, and a reappointment, appointment number seven, Sean Bradley, 31 Wildwood Drive to the Waterfront Trust until 1231, 2023, and that is the consent agenda this evening.
Thank you. What's the will of the council?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the following amendment that Transfer 004 have, be jointly referred not only to budget and finance, but also joint ed, so we can discuss.
Is that seconded?
Yes.
Second. Counselor Jenta, discussion, any? All those in favor of the motion with conditions with amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So enacted. This being the end of the consent agenda, we'll move on to appointments.
Motion to approve consent agenda as amended?
I'm sorry. I thought his motion was motion to approve with amendment.
Correct.
That's the way I pronounced it, but if you want to do a belt and suspenders on this, what's the ruling, the clerk?
I just want to, that would be fine as long as we have a second.
Second.
You move second? Approved with amendments?
Approved with amendments, then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mayor's update having been disposed of. We need to receive and file that one, however, so.
Second.
Received, Counselor Vogel, and seconded, Counselor Zied. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, appointments. We have before us a second reading.
Second reading, appointment number two, Mark Rosen, 20 Fair Street CPC until 2121. We have appointment number three, John Green, 12 Finnegan Way, Council on Aging, 531, 2023. Betty Jakes, 5 Dawes Street, License Board until 61, 2024. Donna Conway, 27 Marlborough Street to the Emma Andrews Commission, 1030, 2019. We have those three.
Motion to approve collectively? Motion to approve collectively and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call.
Roll call on appointment, those four appointments, Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
Counselor President Connell.
Yes.
Thank you, councilors. I think we move on to orders.
Okay, the first order is order number 10, which is the proposed redraft of the 2018 City Council rules as drafted and presented by Counselor Jared J. Agaman.
Motion to refer to committee on rules. Second. Moved and seconded, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Move to rules. Next order.
Order number 11 reads as follows. City Council hereby amends the rules of the City Council 2018 by adding the following. Rule 11A, any measure pertaining to zoning, finance, or operations placed on the agenda shall include an acknowledgment that the appropriate department head has reviewed said measure submitted, Counselor Bruce L. Vogel.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Motion was to receive and file. Discussion? Counselor Vogel.
Well, at the very least, I think that we ought to either kill it or let it go to the Rules Committee for some sort of discussion. I would like to, a friendly amendment of sending it to Rules.
Not friendly to me, sorry.
We'll need a second for that amendment to be considered. Is there a second to Counselor Vogel's amendment?
Wow.
I'll second it.
Okay, so now we have a motion to receive and file and to the Rules Committee, which is a little.
I'm trying to underst, I'm sorry. What is the motion?
Counselor Agaman? Well, so we had a motion to receive and file, and so the motion is to amend, or?
Well, actually, I take it back. It was the wrong language. I.
Counselor Vogel?
Thank you. I'm not sure what the appropriate path would be, other than to suggest that we send it to, well, for discussion purposes, I guess I'll just back right up to there. And I guess I'll start. So, in the last, you know, 48 hours, I have been called a fascist and Trump, and, you know, it's pretty amazing to me that I get to wear those badges, literally. I'm glad you find that humorous. So, here's the deal. This, I, we've talked to a few people about this over the course of time, and the idea was to talk about it in our retreat, but we ran out of time. We just spent way too much time doing what we did in the retreat, and I didn't get to bring it up. So, I thought, well, what the heck? Let's put it in here, and let's have this discussion. There is a rift, and I don't know that the public really understands that there's this rift between what goes on in here or between the individuals in this room and the administration, and I would like to find a path to solving that rift, and we're, well, we don't seem to be up for it, so I'm trying to find a path. And so, all I'm doing is getting feedback from the administration that says, you know what, just let us know what's happening. And so, I was trying to do that here. It was rushed. I was on vacation. I had no idea that even the, I thought that for sure when I was on vacation that the rules that we had talked about in committee would, or in the retreat, would come out and be in the packet for that meeting that I missed. It didn't happen. I get back from vacation, and now they're coming, I talked to the, to the clerk, I find out that they're coming into this packet. So, I thought, well, you know what, let's, let's continue the discussion by having this open discussion about how we're doing business. Again, I've been called a fascist, and I've been told that this is unconstitutional or threatened with being unconstitutional and being sued for bringing forward, bringing forward something like this. We are not a partisan arrangement here. We are not multiple levels of government. We do not have, you know, three branches of government. If you consider that on the national scene, we actually have four, because the Senate and the House are so divided. What we have is, we have a mayor and a city council and a partisan, or a nonpartisan arrangement that has the same constituents. Our constituents are the 18,000 people that live in this community, and our efforts should be worked on in a manner that is collaborative and appreciative and respectful, and I don't think that that particularly happens all the time. And, and the administration suggests that they're often blindsided, that they often, things come their way that they, they weren't aware of. I'm not asking for approval. I'm not suggesting you go, that you, you do any backdoor deals or anything like that. I'm just saying, you simply come forward and you go, hey, look, I'm going forward with this, letting you know. And when it comes to council, at least, we've known that the city has seen it or that the administration has seen it, and maybe some opportunity for them to have some review of it and to provide in our packet their perspective, so that, that we're ahead of the game and that we're talking to one another. That's all I'm suggesting. I get a nod from a counselor on the floor that, oh, now I know where this came from. Yeah, it came from the administration. There is no love lost. I'll tell you straight out, there's no love lost between the mayor and I. I'll say this publicly. I've known the mayor since we were freshman councilors back in 2005. We worked our asses off as freshman councilors, where, where other councilors sort of just dwaddled along. We worked hard. We became friends. We sat on the budget and finance committee together. Over the course of time, we have differences of opinion, and there's no love lost. There's no, and there's no holes barred when we have conversations. We get down to it. Sometimes it gets a little bit colorful, but we walk away from it and we start over again the next time without, without holding any grudges. And I don't think that that really happens amongst all of us here and the administration, and I find that shameful. I find it, I find it sad, and I'm looking for a path to collaboration and, and, and moving forward for all the constituents in this community. That's what I'm looking for, and if you don't think that it's worthy of having the discussion in a committee meeting, vote no and have at it. But otherwise, let's talk about it. Let's talk about it a little bit more openly. We didn't get a chance in our retreat, so the next time we might be able to do it is in, is in a committee meeting. But if you don't want to do it, that's fine with me.
Counselor Zied.
So, the at-large council wants to have the discussion, so let's have the discussion right here. I don't see why, there's no reason we can't have this discussion, and I will be voting to receive and file this. I actually share a lot of the goals that the at-large council just mentioned, Mr. President, about working together and so forth, but this order is not the vehicle for us to discuss it. And the reality of what we do in this room is we go by the written word. We go by what the order says, and if you read the order, it's pretty blunt and it's pretty straightforward. Something is not going to be filed in the city council unless an acknowledgement is accompanied with it. It's a one-sentence order. This isn't hours of research to understand what it says. So, let me run this through for everybody. Today, if, if a constituent of mine, I represent Ward 1, comes to me with an idea, and I decide that it's worthy of proposing a piece of legislation, I write it up and I submit it, and it goes to committee if it's deemed worthy by the 11 of us together, and then we debate it. It may get amended. It may get killed. It may die in committee. It may lose. It may come back to the floor, and all those things are possible, but the pop, but the process is public. If this order were to pass, and why I cannot in good conscience send it to committee, I wouldn't have that freedom to just go in and place my legislation. I would have to go to, in the case of a zoning ordinance, the planning director, or in the case of something that has to do with roads or streets, the DPS director, and ask for their acknowledgement. It is morally corrupt to do things that way, and if you wanted to have the discussion about how we should work together better, this was not the right way to initiate it because this is a violation, and I have to unfortunately have some disagreements. We do have two houses of government in Newburyport. We have a legislative branch, that's the 11 of us, and we have an administrative branch. And let me address the next aspect, which is this ongoing thing about operations, operations, operations. If you take finance and operations and what happens, the city council would have no power, because in, in one way, shape, or form, every single thing we do in this room, from the most benign dog poop bag ordinance to a heavy rezoning of several portions of the neighborhood, there will be an operational impact. There will. So, the, sort of, the line has been, it's operations. You can't touch it. It's operations. You can't touch it. Well, guess what? Everything we have on the agenda tonight is going to have an operational impact, and everything we do may or may not have a financial impact. So, there is an operational role for the city council where there is a nexus between the public policy that we debate publicly, on camera, in front of people, and what happens in the administration. So, while I share the same goals as the at-large councilor and would like to have better relations with the administration, I don't think putting us in a position where we're at odds with department heads is a good idea. I don't think it's fair to the department heads, actually, if you ask me personally, that they would be in an awkward position where they're stuck between a counselor and the, and the mayor, saying, should I give my acknowledgement or should I not? And just in terms of good governance, this makes no sense. I mean, go and watch Schoolhouse Rock, How a Bill Becomes Law. It's the most basic fundamental thing. The representative gets the call. He says, I'm going to write up something. He writes it up and he puts it in, and whatever bloodbath may ensue from there on the floor and committee is fine with me. There's no sense in trying to bury the ugliness of the process. It needs to be public. It needs to be open. People need to say what they want to say and be on with it. So, I would welcome that discussion. If the city council president wishes to count, you know, ask for further discussion, I think that'd be great, but this is not the way to go, and I urge you to vote to receive and file it so we can be done with it and start afresh another time.
Counselor Agaman?
I also support the motion to receive and file. I've been on the council a shorter time than the at-large sponsor, four years, and I have never voted to receive and file a colleague's proposal without first referring it to committee, but I have to tonight. And I did try to communicate with the sponsor privately. I use the word fascism. I didn't call him a fascist, but I think this is fascism. This order is at odds with basic Anglo-American law, developed through centuries, spread through the world, wherever there is a parliament or an assembly of delegates, however small and humble like, like we are. During U.S. history class, every American high school student has to learn about the separation of powers, which this rule defies. Even if they have not read them, most students have at least heard of the Federalist Papers, and they know that there are three branches of government in the federal, three branches in our federal government. It's as if a member of this council proposed a rule saying that our policy is to write laws that treat residents unequally. That is so fundamentally opposite to what we do here. I would fight against sending that to committee as well. This proposed rule is not just fundamentally wrong, it's absurd. The very word "legislation", from Latin before it came in English, means bringing or proposing, lascio, law. Would we have a rule saying that we're going to start trying drunk drivers? No, because that's not legislation. That's judiciary. It, it's, it's not even an order. There are places that have forsaken basic democratic principles, that mix executive and legislative powers into an authoritarian cronyism, that control public discourse with preapproval, censorship, prior restraint, that use code words like respect when they mean obedience. Just yesterday, the New York Times ran a front-page article about Hungary, a country I know well, had a functioning democracy from 1990 to 2010, but they've even dropped the word republic from their name. Here's an anecdote from that article about the collaboration between the branches there. Now, an opposition party member recalled being asked by a ruling party member about a proposed law to bar all criminal suspects from speaking to a lawyer in the first 48 hours after arrest. The shocked ruling party member asked him, have you seen this bill? Yes, I did see it, the opposition party member said. But you know, did you know that you were the one that introduced it? Hungary is obscure and far away. Millions of people who died horribly in Central Europe last century during earlier rounds of elected autocracy are literally foreign to us. But in this country, our elected President Trump casually says that legislators who do not clap for him are committing treason. So, there are plenty of Americans, and it seems Newburyporters, who tend that way. This proposal is the first I've seen in our little city legislature that is so fundamentally illegal and out of order that it cannot go forward. A mere six weeks ago, we all stood, we raised our right hands, we swore to God that we would uphold the U.S. Constitution, the state constitution, and the city charter. Unless those oaths are a lie, a joke that we are playing on the republic and each, the public and everyone else, it's got to get off our docket right now. This order's got to get off. Thank you.
Counselor Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, well said, and so, does one take solace in at least bringing the attention? Perhaps. Maybe that's where I ought to just sit down and be quiet. But I'll tell you one more time that the, the intention was simply to have the conversation, was simply to bring it into, if it's done improperly, which we've, we've put together plenty of orders that didn't meet the, you know, the test at the moment, but went to committee and came back changed. So, this was simply an effort to start the conversation. Again, I wasn't able to do it in our retreat, so I thought I would just put it out there so that we could talk about it. But apparently, we, we don't even want to try to fine-tune it, try to find a way, and that's okay. We don't have to find the way. We can just continue on. And I, I'll tell you also, again, this just blows my mind because you, you, the, the, the whole purpose of this was to actually open up the democracy, was to open up the process, so, was to open up the collaboration. And I hear moans and groans, but you really don't know what's going on. That's the, you, you don't understand some of the things of some, so, you don't understand what, what comes out and what, what goes on between the parties in, in this building. So, I'm just, was trying to open up a path. That's all I was trying to do, but you know what? We don't need it. We clearly don't need the path. We're doing just fine. Thank you. I'm done. We can receive and file it.
Counselor Devlin?
I would just like to stand and apologize. I didn't mean to, I didn't really realize that it was, I was trying to be rough sense of humor that we've usually displayed. I did not mean to be snarky to you, to my counsel-at-large colleague. I did want to get that on the record. That wasn't my intention. Second, I would never call you a fascist or, or a, I forgot what the other one, Trump, either, because I just think this was a more misguided. the other one, Trump, either, because I just think this was a more misguided attempt. And for me, I just want to, you know, I'll say for the record as well, to any department heads and to anybody in City Hall and to the mayor's office, when we file something, it is a proposal. It is not going to be voted on that next time. And even in this light, it's a proposal. So I'm not, I don't feel, you know, angry towards you, or particularly passionate about this, other than the fact that I don't think this would ever get passed, and so I would support receiving filing it here, because I think it's illegal. And, you know, it would be like us saying, let's make a friendly amendment to this and say that any directive to department heads from the mayor's office has to be, you know, acknowledged by us first. And we would never propose it. That would be preposterous to do. So, you know, for me, I did just want to get out, you know, I actually wasn't going to say anything because it seemed to be dying, but I did want to get it out. I did not mean to be snarky to you.
Thanks.
And again, to the department heads, when we propose something, we're not saying, sometimes we do disagree with how things are being run, or we have, we represent citizens, residents who disagree with how things are being done, and we are proposing alternatives. And that's all it is. If you want to come and comment on that proposal, come to the committee meeting. We're more than welcome to have you there, and most of the time you are there, and you add to the discussion. So that's my feeling on this, and thank you.
Further discussion?
So, Mr. President, we, as I see it, we have on the floor, a motion to amend, to send it to Rules Committee first and second.
I'll, I am.
Withdraw?
Withdraw, my amendment.
Withdraw my second.
Okay, then that leaves us with a motion to receive and file.
There's a motion to receive and file on the floor. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Who knows?
Thank you, counselors. We'll move on to ordinances.
The ordinance number 18 is a second reading for the ordinance. It's a zoning map change submitted by Counselor Gregory D. Earl.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to remove the second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. We'll take a roll call on this.
Ordinance number 18, motion approved, second reading. Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Note for the record, Counselor Eichmann has recused himself and left the room. And Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Motion for second reading passes.
Did someone recover Counselor Eichmann? Read your mind. Next item.
Next item is.
Ordinance number six?
Ordinance number six, which is an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances regarding the administration of the city council. It deals with Sections 2-28, 2-29, that's regular meetings and special meetings, committees designated, membership thereof, 232 responsibilities for a number of the standing committees. It is submitted by Counselor Eichmann.
Do I hear a motion?
Zede, I think. Nope.
Uh-oh.
This is yours, administration.
I'm sorry. Motion to refer to the Rules Committee, second. Motion to refers to rules and seconded by Counselor O'Brien. Is there discussion? Hearing none at this time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's in rules. Ordinance number seven.
It's an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 7, City Solicitor. It amends Section 2, 246, appointment qualifications, essentially by adding, with the approval of the mayor, to the appointment of the city solicitor in the month of January annually. And also, Section 2, 252, it amends, it's a new section, mandatory attendance required in the event of certain zoning board hearings, and that is submitted by Counselor Zede.
Motion to refer to Rules Committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Rules. Is there, I'm sorry, what Rule Committee did you say? Was it to rules or was it?
I said rules, and I got a second, so I'll leave it for a moment, but I'm open to discussion if others.
Yes.
And it has been seconded. Counselor Jenta, am I right?
It was a second by Counselor O'Brien.
O'Brien, I'm sorry. Discussion. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also think this is under the finance.
Stand.
Oh, stand, sorry. I'm starting to relax here, okay. Thank you. I'm like, why are they doing this? Applause, applause. No, I also want to, because I believe the section in the ordinance is under the finance as well, so I was wondering if it would make sense to also include budget and finance, just because the section in the ordinance was that.
Is that a friendly amendment?
Not yet. Let me, I want to, I think, if I may, just, I don't want to send it to 20 places. I know that the Sharif rule exists to prohibit that from happening. So, to the extent that I can, I mean, I'm really open to where it goes, but just, you know, if we, if we want to drag in three committees, I will, I'm fine with it. I've never been opposed to it in the past, but I see another head shaking.
Precedent.
Yeah, I hate, I see another head shaking across the way. So there's another committee to the.
Counselor Earls?
I think general government would be more appropriate, because these aren't really rules we're talking about. We're talking about changes to City Hall, and that's exactly where general government is charged with, because we're mentioning the mayor, we're mentioning the city solicitor, who will be appointed by the mayor. So how that affects our rules, I'm not sure. I think general government is just a more appropriate place.
Counselor Eichmann?
Yeah, I agree. The, it's general government. The Committee on General Government shall be concerned with municipal departments, so I think that's the right place.
So I'll withdraw for rules, and I'll make a motion to refer to general government.
Second.
Did we have a withdrawal of the second to the first motion?
Yes, we did.
Do we now have a second?
Yes.
We do. Thank you, Counselor O'Brien. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion on this referral to general government. Counselor Zede?
Yeah, I just want to speak briefly about this proposal. So, you know, I think one thing that's true is a lot of people don't know what's happening in City Hall, so they may be under the impression that the city solicitor is selected by the city council and that we often have regular and frequent direct communication with the city council, with the city solicitor, but that isn't the case. And I think we need to talk about it. And I think I have done some legal research with my brilliant legal mind, which is growing by the day, and I believe there's a pretty clear and open path to this, and I believe it's defensible. As far as the second portion goes, I mean, how many times have we talked about supporting the Planning and Zoning Board with city solicitor support? And I think this is one way to do it. I've often found with certain things that sometimes if you just codify certain thresholds, it makes it easier, because it takes the pressure off of any one person's responsibility to say, yes, the city solicitor needs to be there. I'm open to discussion on what those thresholds may be, up, down, sideways, or backwards, but I think that this would be something that would be positive, so that we can continue on our path of trying to sort of work on the development environment in Newburyport. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Counselor Vogel.
Since we have it on the floor for discussion and we're being so candid this evening, has there been any thought at all about cost involved in this?
Well, yes, I think about cost all the time, and I think that, you know, the way I look at it is I intentionally set the thresholds to be purposeful, that this isn't an every-other-week sort of scenario here. We're talking about calling in the city solicitor when you have 10 or more units. That's a fairly substantial project. I think most of us can remember the number of projects that occurred with that number of units. It's issues where somebody's proposing to develop in a water resource protection district, maybe something near a well. It's cases for Waterfront West. I mean, these are high-test items. And the ordinance was specifically written to only require attendance for the first meeting, so that the city solicitor could be there when the initial application was made, so they would understand what the proposal is. And that way, when the question comes in in meeting three, they're not being, you know, going, trying to read 300 pages of applications to catch up and get the context of what the discussion is. But I'm, you know, very, very sensitive to cost, as I am on most things, and I'm open to that discussion. But that was the thinking behind why set the thresholds where they are. I don't want to see the city solicitor personally at every meeting of the ZBA and Planning Board from a cost perspective, although there may be other arguments. So I think this is a step in the right direction that we can handle and we can do.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Eichmann?
Just some information for the public on cost. Our annual budget for the city solicitor, the entire budget, is only about $70,000 on a $64 million annual budget. So if you were a corporation, that would, that would be infinitesimally small. Also, you have to realize that if we, when we don't have lawyers present, it ends up costing us more money later. You know, we get sued. And that's much more expensive than paying an hourly rate for an attorney to be there. And also, that's normal. I mean, almost every community I've been to of any size, except the really rinky-dink ones, there's a city solicitor sitting right there to answer questions.
Thank you. Further discussion. Counselor Shan?
I just want to say that, you know, having sat through a few of those planning board meetings last year, you could tell that there was some need to have a city solicitor there, because the meetings just did go on forever, and you could tell that the folks that weren't, that were representing the clients and not the city were the ones that were more in charge, and we were taking their legal advice and not that of the city solicitor. So, makes sense.
Move the question. Additional question, additional discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of referring this item to general government, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. General government, interested to see what you say about this one. Ordinance number eight.
Ordinance number eight is regarding management and authorizing lease or conveyance by deed of the former G.W. Brown School property. It goes on for five pages. It is submitted by Counselor Eichmann.
Motion to refer to Planning and Development. Moved and seconded, the Planning and Development. Discussion. Counselor Zede?
I just wanted to publicly thank the Ward 2 counselor for his efforts on this. If you think the Brown School is an easy issue, then you're not the Ward 2 counselor, or shortly infinitesimally behind that, the Ward 1 counselor, who have been fielding a lot of comments. But what I really want to say to the public that's watching is, a lot of people have contacted me and don't understand where the Brown School is in the process. They don't know if something's already happening, or it's happened, or has a vote been taken. This is, in my opinion, I'm the city counselor, so this is where I live. This is what you want to come to, and when the Planning and Development Committee meetings are scheduled, this is what you want to come to, particularly the committee meetings, because as folks know who follow us, a lot of work gets done in committee, and when it comes to the floor, a lot of those debates will have happened in committee. So if you care about the Brown School, what happens to it, whatever, is your interest. This will be the one to watch, and I hope that we'll get, I'm hoping for large attendance, so that we can hash out what I think is a very difficult balancing act between lots of different important priorities.
Counselor O'Brien.
I was reading Facebook today, and I saw a lot of attacks on counsel from proposals amendment, disordinance, and some of the things that were said about them, you know, someone had to file this motion first, had to file this ordinance, so we could bring it to committee and discuss it. And I was reading in the Boston Globe yesterday, it said, Mr. Connell proposed this bill, he called it a shell bill. He just wanted to get it out there, so all his, all the other legislators can work together as a team and have a great final product. And I think this is what Counselor Eichmann tried to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Additional discussion? Hearing none. The proposition may be related.
If I'm my counselor, I don't know if you spoke with a counselor. I did. He is ill, and he's the sponsor, as I understand it. And I think we have a rule that says if the sponsor's not present, it can't come out, and he was fine with it sitting here until next meeting, unless you know more.
No, I don't, I don't know anymore. It's just, my custom, the custom of, is that the next person in line does the chair's work if he or she is not.
Sponsor, and our rules state that the sponsor has to be present for the.
It's Rule 12, I think.
No, if those are his wishes, I don't, there's no intent to override, so I'll withdraw, and it's fine. Do it next time, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor. And we will, I'm quite sure, take this up at our next meeting. There's no time pressure on this report. Give us some time to pour over the chapter and verse. Other items in budget and finance?
There are none, nothing else.
Thank you. General government?
None at this time.
Joint Ed? Counselor Jenta.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a meeting with our colleagues from the school committee last Monday. We had three, three items on our agenda, the high school roof repair, middle school elevator, and the budget. The high school roof repair will be moved to our next meeting. We did, we did talk about the middle school elevator. The school committee was just curious about what our process was. They had read a story in the paper. They were interested to find out exactly what happened. So with my help from the folks from budget and finance, we gave them an explanation on how that all came together. But we also talked about how it came into more of a detailed discussion on how as a city we go out to bid. You know, should, should we be paying for a study and then sending the project out to bid, and then once we get bids back, then approving money? Or should we go in the same direction that we've gone in the past, where we get an estimate from the study, and then we approve money, and then we go out to bid? So it was quite, quite a conversation. Somebody from the private sector, we would certainly, we would certainly go out to bid and then approve money for it after, once we saw. But what we found is in the public sector, they do exactly the reverse. They actually approve money first, then go out to bid. And to some of us, it seemed like, almost like a tipping of your hand. We're actually telling the contractors how much money you have to spend. So it's very interesting to see the difference between public and private. So we gave them a full rundown on the elevator, and so they were thankful to sort of get the scoop on that. And then, secondly, they went through the, they went through how they developed their budget on the, on the school committee side, starting with principals and school councils, going to their leadership team, and then going into public hearings. And as the mayor had mentioned, there's a public hearing coming up next week, I believe. Everybody should attend. And they brought us through the whole process to where we get our one light, one line item in the budget on, for the schools. And it was very interesting to hear it from their perspective. And that's what I have to report, but we do have a meeting, our next meeting is on Monday, March, oh, shoot, I forgot to look that up, at 5:30. Take a look real quick. Do you know which day it is? It's the fourth? It is. Thank you, sir. So our next meeting is Monday, March 4th, at 5:30 at the Senior Center. On our agenda, we're going to learn about the, how the school, the school's policy on use of the gymnasiums, how are they reserved by the public, how can they be used. And then the next thing on our agenda is Newburyport Youth Services, the future in the wake of the Brown School discussion, and then we will get to the high school roof repair. Thank you, sir.
I thought you were going to report on the selection of a new principal, which the mayor informed us about tonight. Good.
It's the fifth.
License and permits?
Counselor O'Brien gave me the wrong date.
Communication 005.
Second. Second of 005. Motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of taking 005 out of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion approved.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Vogel, I believe. Counselor Earls?
License permit committee met on this license, vehicle license, and it was 3-0, approved.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to remove. Communication 006.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Zede. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved, and again, Counselor Zede is seconding it.
Again, license, license permit met, I'm sorry. License permit met, 3 to 0 approval.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Communicate, motion to remove. Communication 009 from committee.
Second. And there's a second, I believe it's Counselor O'Brien this time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And that's Counselor Zede. You guys are playing ping pong.
This is to approve Port Taxi relicensing for their cab company to run, to do business in City of Newburyport. Again, approved unanimously. Again, approved unanimously.
Approved unanimously. The other discussion. Questions from the counselors. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One more. Motion to remove communication 011.
Second. Second, I think Counselor Vogel got there first this time. Counselor, any discussion? All those in favor of removing this from committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second. Second. Discussion.
This is the same type of approval request for Sea Coast Taxi. Again, unanimous approval in committee.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The matter passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Neighbored City Services.
Counselor O'Brien. I'll take ordinance 002, 12918, out of committee. It's referred, in my opinion, it should go to another committee. That's why I want to take it out.
Second. Move and second. Take it out of committee. All those, any discussion of that matter? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Public safety.
Repart, to public safety. And seconded?
Which number are we?
Discussion.
Orderance number two.
Noise Division.
Noise, yeah, Noise Division to Chapter Eight. Any discussion on the referral?
Many years ago, we've had this happen twice with motorcycles, and it did go to the public safety.
That's true.
I just wanted to send it to the board.
Agreed. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of referring this matter to public safety, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's in public safety. Anything else, Counselor?
Well, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning and Development.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just a report. So going down the list, ordinance 17, no use variances is still being held. We've closed the public hearing on that, that we held with Planning, Planning Board, pending a public meeting on February 21st regarding the zoning amendment for table of use regulations, that's ordinance three, and a map amendment, which was ordinance four. Those were requested, or at least generated out of discussions with the chamber. So we're holding the use variances. I don't expect that to come out until end of the month. Okay. Mobility application for small cell utility petition, that's also in Public Utilities. That's not coming out tonight. There's some legal advice that we need on that, and actually, the mayor's office, coincidentally, had gotten a request from Verizon on some telecommunications contracting, and we're, we're sending that to the lawyers. So all of this is on hold. The grant of location is order eight. The medical marijuana zoning map, this is an expansion of the existing district that we adopted a few years ago. That's going to be heard on February 21st at the same joint meeting with Planning Board, sponsored by Counselor Shand.
Joint.
I'm sorry, joint with Planning Board. Motion to remove order nine.
Second. Moved and seconded by Counselor Zied. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second. And seconded, again by Counselor Zied. You're going to have to get quicker on the draw line.
Okay, so.
Excuse me.
We had a, we had a committee meeting on this. We unanimously recommended 3 to 0 to recommend approval. We had the prospective lessy here to speak on his own behalf. We had the planning director. The planning director put on your desk an amendment which we had put in mentioning the dollar amount of the lease, but I don't think it's necessary, actually. I had been working from the wrong version. The version in your packet does reference under C already, that the lease price shall be substantially consistent with an appraisal, et cetera, et cetera, and that happens to be the $36,000. So we don't need to amend this. I leave it up to others if they want to propose it, but, okay, just some details for, in case there are any questions. Counselors Jenta and Vogel attended and asked directly. It's a 60-year lease, and that's because there's substantial work that has to be done to the property. Essentially, it'll take decades for the project to pencil out. It's in such rough shape. It doesn't even have a sewer hookup right now. So that is valid. There is a rent increase automatically every year that's baked in. That's important. Also, if in the course of the 60 years, there's a assignment of the lease to another party, the city has the option to terminate. So that protects the city. That's pretty much it, unless others want to add something. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zied.
I'll just add a few things, since it's my ward. For those who don't know or aren't familiar, this is the very decrepit building that is opposite the new wastewater treatment facility. It was taken by eminent domain when the project was originally done and has sort of fallen into somewhat a disrepair since it's been vacant, with the exception of the garage bays, which the city has been using for storage of materials used in the course of treating wastewater. I think, you know, just, just a quick add is, you know, the use is office use, so I know, as the sort of representative for the neighborhood, or the person who represents the neighborhood, the most important thing to me was the use, the parking, and some sort of, some of the basic things, in addition to the sort of overall deal tenants here. So we've made it very clear in our order, and it's codified in the lease too, that this is for only one of two purposes, office use or marine dependent, which, which makes sense since it's near the water. Office means quiet. This is not a manufacturing facility, smells, odors, noises. I think the neighbors have had enough of odors especially, so we don't want to introduce any, anything new. The firm that does this, that is proposing this, is, will be a neat addition to the city, I think, and I think the Ward Two Counselor mentioned in committee, there is some economic development benefit here, which is, is valuable. So they intend to have all their parking on site. There is a small cutout available for maybe potential future city usage for kayak storage, which was something that some residents had contacted. And then the, the last thing I want to mention that is important about this, is this is a lease, and I think that's why we had to make some agreements on some of the parameters, because in the long run, we wanted to hold the land and hold the building. If we were willing to sell it, it may have been a different story, but I know I personally have, you know, just don't know what 60 years holds for wastewater treatment facility technology. And so we already know things like, you know, stormwater management and all that other stuff that keep kicking down the road, may someday come, so we don't know if someday we may need the land. So this is the best, I think, of, between not having to sell it, but getting to retain it, and appreciating that their applicant needs sufficient number of time to amortize the substantial expense. And Ward Two Counselor mentioned, the irony that the building that is opposite the sewer plant doesn't have a sewer line, but they will. So with that, I ask for your support, and hopefully we can move forward. Thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none. I'm advised by the counselor, by the clerk, excuse me, that this being the disposition of property, we need to have a roll call vote.
I think it'd be good practice, Mr. President.
Thank you. So let's call a roll.
It's a moment of order. No amendment, the one that's in the packet is what we're voting on.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
Still noted for the record. So it is as it was in the packet, order number nine. Counselor Jenta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shand?
Yes.
Counselor Tonto Stilapsen?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earl's?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Connell?
Yes.
And I thank Counselors Zied and Agarwal for the diligence in this matter. Any additional matters in Planning and Development that are coming up?
No.
Thank you. All right. Public safety.
Motion to remove communication 008, 0129, 2018 Chocolate Tour.
Second.
Motion to receive and file. Hope you have to vote on the motion.
Taking it out of committee. All those in favor of taking this out of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
The motion is to receive and file. Discussion.
Yes, if I may, Mr. President, I had a good conversation with Deborah Aldridge, who helps runs this for the Central Congregational Church. It's a charitable endeavor. They actually don't use any city property. They sell tickets, about 400 of them, or 700 of them, no, 400 of them, on the, their own property out front of the church. And the chocolate itself is in local merchants, so they get a ticket and they get to go in there, and so it really doesn't, it just brings more people into our, our businesses. Just to kind of tout, toot their own horns, which I don't think they're doing. None of it goes to the church. They took this over from the Red Cross. Several members at the church did. They raised about $11,000 last year. It goes to various charities. This year, it's four charities. One is a children's cancer hospice, I believe. One is for prescription help for elderly people in, in four, Newburyport and three other communities through their councils on aging. And I'm forgetting what the other two were, and I don't know where my notes are for it, so, but they were very good causes, and Deborah was a wonderful woman. She said through the years, she's done nothing but send this in to us and just to let us know what's happening, and she's never gotten a permit in return, so that's why we're receiving filing it.
Additional comments? Counselor Earl's.
Well, I am completely supporting this, but it, they do the right thing, and they are using public space, completely. So I think it, we're complimenting them when we give approval instead of receive and file, that they've actually come here and said, "We'd like to use public space," and we say, "Yes, and thank you very much." I think that's the proper vote. I know it sounds menial, but receive and file is just sort of pushing aside instead of saying, "Yes, definitely, please use the public space."
Counselor Agarwal had to stand up. I'll come back to you, Counselor Devlin. Okay?
I don't know what public space they're using. They're walking, they're, people, people who are going and patronizing our shops are walking on our sidewalks, and we don't, that happens every day, and we're not giving them a permit for it.
They're in Market Square.
What's that?
They're in Market Square.
It's a table in Market Square, but it's the same thing that we do with the.
Yeah, but we give permission. One moment, please. Counselor Devlin has the floor.
All right. I mean, look, we did not vote to, to approve it, but if we're doing that, then they, don't they have to fill out a full, full application and get the sign off from various departments?
Is there further discussion? You've got to sit down. Counselor Agarwal.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I was just trying to help. No, I mean, it, we, we have to give permission for people to put a table on the public way, that's all. I mean, they don't, you know, I'm not trying to send them to some rigmarole. We can get them out of here tonight. I just think Counselor Earl's probably right, rather than receive and file, we'll just do a motion to approve. Sure.
Okay. Excuse me. Do we have an application to use public property, then? That would be my question. Do we need an application? And what is the date again?
April 19th. I'm sorry, May 19th.
If you're asking me, we have a very lengthy, complex event application that we really don't use if someone just wants a table, generally speaking.
Never have.
And even though if you looked at the application, maybe by the pure letter of it, but I think common sense generally rules on this, and we just approve it.
Fair enough. Pull your receiving file back up.
I will withdraw my motion to receive and file.
My second.
Withdrawn? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and seconded. Further discussion on this matter? Motion to approve. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Counselors. Anything else on public safety?
Yes. Motion to remove communication 127, 1211, 2017, snow and ice plan.
Second.
Moved and seconded, take out of committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion to receive and file, and it has been seconded. Is there discussion?
Yes. This was discussed at the TSAC Traffic and Safety Advisory Committee meeting on Thursday, and then half hour later, at the Public Safety Committee meeting. At the TSAC meeting, Jenny Donahue, the Chairwoman of the Commission on Disabilities?
Yes.
Was there, and she did have several comments to make with regards to snow and ice, the importance of snow and ice removal, especially at ramps from sidewalks to streets, but also more importantly, around the push buttons for walkways, pedestrian walkways and lights. The Wayne Amaral from DPS was there, and he said those were good points. They weren't a part of this, but it was, it was good for discussion and for future discussion, and, and they were happy to hear those comments. At our Public Safety Committee meeting, nobody showed up, and so there was no comment from the public. Counselor O'Brien was happy to see, if I could speak for him, that we had pre-treatment for the roads when they were expecting at least two inches, because that's very helpful. And Counselor Jenta, did you have any positive comments that you'd like to add?
No.
All right. So it was voted 3 to 0 to receive and file.
Thank you. Counselor Zied.
I just had one quick comment that I think is relatively new, so I think it, just to, public service announcement, I mean, in the first paragraph, there's a list of lots, and that includes the Green Street Lot, the Cashman, Cushing Park, and so forth, and then below in bold, it says, "Please note, all vehicles must be removed within 24 hours at the end of the hand." So I happened to be in the Green Street Lot after one of the storms, and they put up the billboards that said, "Don't park in this row," and the entire row was full. So this is something that I think has, needs to continue to be massaged, because it's tough to enforce, and people want to park, so, you know, maybe it's a matter of one lot closes, and then the other one opens, so they can clear snow, and people can park, and so forth. But for the public, because I think some people got tickets, so they're aware of why they got a ticket, I think this is where this is originating from, so that it's, I don't know, maybe, maybe the chair or the committee discussed that.
Counselor?
The Public Safety Committee did not speak, did talk about that, but the, because no one showed up to bring it up, but the TSAC did discuss it, and I might as well, you know, communicate that now. Clerk Jones made a suggestion that, that was going to be discussed in more detail at the next meeting, to, to, you know, reserve half of the parking lot for emergency snow meeting, to do, you know, reserve half of the parking lot for emergency snow parking, the half towards the police station, so that the next morning, when, if those cars hadn't cleared out yet, the half that are closer to the shops will be open and available for businesses and customers of the businesses to park. Is that an accurate rendition?
It is. May, Mr. President?
Yes, very accurate. Thank you. And I also want to mention, it says, and I think Counselor Zied mentioned, 24 hours. It's actually 12 hours. I'm quite clear on that at this point. I'm not sure why they're saying still, it used to be 24 hours, but I think we even talked about it in TSAC.
It's 12.
It's 12 hours.
Sorry, I was reading from the...
I know, I know. It's one of those lingering typos that just won't go away.
Yeah. That should be 12.
Do we need to amend this? Is that a script?
Receiving and filing it.
Okay. So everyone understands the correction that the clerk just made?
I mean, to be clear, on page three, it says, "All vehicles must be removed from the above listed lots within 24 hours." That should be 12 hours.
Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Further discussion? Counselor O'Brien?
I'd just like to have some clarification sometime on, we've got three posts on cleanup and clearing on number four, downtown and other business areas treated, and snow removal may take place. What does business area treat? Does that mean they shovel the driveway, they shovel sidewalks, or something like that? I'd like to know. But, you know, we're penalizing residents $25,000 to go with their sidewalks, but if we're going down to shovel the business sidewalks, it seems like it repeats the purpose. I'd just like some clarification on that, because I've had, for the four residents call me on that situation, so I just wanted to bring it forward and speak for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Additional comments? Hearing none. The motion was to approve?
Stephen Farnes.
The motion was to receive and file. Yeah, I'm looking at the wrong item. All those in favor of receiving and filing this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Counselor. Public Utilities?
Oh, we're not done.
That's it?
We've got two more.
I'm sorry. I jumped the gun.
Motion to remove, and I'm going to take it out of order here. Motion to remove Order Number 005, 18, 2018, No Parking, Fruit Street, driveway.
Second. Moved and seconded, take it out. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Oh, very briefly, this was someone that Wayne Amaral, the deputy director of DPS, and I met with. Just, this is another instance of people parking too close to her driveway. Need to remind her with a sign for people to stay back, so she can get out. Fairly routine.
Further discussion?
We discussed it at Public Safety. It was, I also discussed it with Wayne, and it was recommended for approval 3 to nothing.
3 to nothing. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to remove Ordinance 004, 18, 2008, No Parking, Fair Street at Essex.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor of taking this out of committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion? Counselor Devlin?
So this was discussed, and I will let the counsel from Ward 2 discuss the reasons for it, but this was discussed with Wayne Amaral, and also at the Public Safety Committee meeting. The only suggestion that Wayne had was to make the 15 feet, 20 feet, because it's by state law. And if we said less than 15 feet, the idea was making it 15 feet, we might be able to keep some more parking spaces on a street that is tight for parking, but Wayne said then we're saying that they can do something that they can't do under state law.
Correct.
So for the reasoning, I'll turn it over to the Ward 2 Counselor.
Before we get the reasoning, are you reporting this out with that amendment, therefore?
I wasn't sure how to do it.
I'll motion to amend, change 15 to 20 feet.
Second.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that...
Seconded. All those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Thank you. Counselor Agnew?
The chair already covered everything. Yes, we were trying to save a little bit of parking. This is a situation, tight street, person can't get out. This will solve the problem.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Junta?
Just a question to Ward 2 Counselor. I had, in subcommittee, my question was, is moving this from 15 to 20, and I know it's the state law, but do we, do we take another parking spot offline by moving it to 20?
I do not believe so. I mean, I know this corner pretty well. I think I went for the, I went for 15, but I knew that 20 was really the state law, so I think it's going to be okay.
Okay. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The matter passes. Now I know that Public Safety is done, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Public Utilities?
Nothing to report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor? Rules Committee?
I have nothing to report.
Good of the order. Counselor Ehrle?
Just a request, I guess, to the chair of Joint Ed. I did not hear that the new, there was a budget in finance, it was joint to put the budget in finance and joint education regarding the proposal for building over the gym. I assume that March 4th, you will also have that on your agenda.
We do now.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Vogel?
So Gary Casman, the executive director of the Link House, asked that I bring to your attention that joy and good times and delicious food will be served at the annual event, the St. Patty's Day Luncheon, and the information's on your desk.
For the good of the order. Hearing none. I'll obtain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're done.